Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we'll, we'll, good to know. All right. It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call a meeting to order and again, put your airplane, put your phones on airplane mode and first order of business, would you join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
So, welcome everyone here this evening and also those of you watching on YouTube. I think we're recording.
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is the regular city council meeting from Minutrista November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Present this evening is myself, I'm Lisa Weller, and I'm the mayor. And to my left, to your right, sorry, it's confusing. We have council members Kathleen Rafkin, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy, and McGregor is absent this evening. And then staff present this evening is our Director of Public Works, Gary Peters. Ally Paulos is our Director of Administration. Also with us this evening online is our city clerk taking notes. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, who is our city administrator. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. Sarah Zanzala is our legal attorney, legal advisor attorney. And then we have Paul Falls, who is our chief of police. With that, I have one change to the agenda and we are going to be adding an item under consent agendas. And it's going to be the settlement agreement in mutual release. And that's a settlement agreement in mutual release Ronald Smith and Scott Fisk versus City of Minutrista and Jasper Krugel. It's Minutrista case number twenty-seven dash C V dash two four dash one oh eight three eight. And we discussed this in closed session, in a work session. That's the only agenda item change that I have. Except for we are also, we will not be having special presentation, so we're going to be removing the Saint Bonnie Lyons presentation and they'll join us probably next time. Or next year, okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We have a rather lengthy consent agenda, so we have persons to be heard. I believe the gentleman, Michael and Jim, you're here for an item and so you'll get an opportunity to speak during that item, okay? Is that, all right. And then, so our consent agenda is lengthy. Are there any you wish to remove? Okay, hearing none, then. We have to approve the work session meeting minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. We have approved the city council regular meeting minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. We have approved the special meeting minutes from November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. D has approved our two thousand and twenty-five personnel policy effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five. E has approved the renewal of professional services agreement with L E A S T for law enforcement wellness services. F has approved the City of Minutrista not to waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability. G has approved the car share agreement with school for the water main. A has approved A two S supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA task order. I is a resolution to approve claims. J is a resolution granting a franchise agreement with Mid-Continent Communications. And then A would be a published by title and summary. And then K is a resolution approving simple subdivision between twenty-five eighty-five, twenty-six oh five Highland Road. I is a resolution accepting improvements and authorized final payment for the West Branch Callville Replacement Project, that's project, city project number zero-three dash two four. M is a resolution accepting improvements and authorized final payment for the two thousand and twenty-four Reclamation Project, city project number zero-two twenty-four. And N is a resolution accepting improvements and authorizing final payment for the two thousand and twenty-three Millenoverly Overlay Project, city project oh-three dash twenty-three. O is a resolution accepting bids and ordering a contract for well number three rehabilitation. P is a resolution to approve task order number fourteen with A two S for the rehabilitation of well number seven, that's city project number zero-two-two-five. And then lastly is the resolution, let's see, awarding the, or accepting and approving the lawsuit, settlement agreement, I'm sorry, between Ronald Smith, Scott Fisk and the city and Jasper Krugel's city case number twenty-seven dash C V dash two four dash one oh eight three eight. Any questions? It's a lengthy agenda, consent agenda. It was in our packet, lots of fun things to go over. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve all of those agenda items?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. Rafkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for O. Next, we have a public hearing and this is regarding our street project for two thousand and twenty-five and its authorizing plans and specifications. And we will also, and because it's a public hearing after Ms. Brown does her presentation, then we will open it up for public comments. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to talk about the two thousand and twenty-five proposed street improvement project. There we go. On the screen, you can see the maps of the areas we're looking for the street improvements on. That includes Windridge Trail, Pine Circle, and the Trillium area, which includes Trillium Lane East, Trillium Lane West, and Trillium Way. The streets were initially evaluated based on the surface condition of the pavement. We also took pavement cores out there to determine any issues below the existing pavement surface. Here's a photo showing the existing conditions of the pavement. Pine Circle was built in nineteen seventy-three and is experiencing alligator cracking and potholes. The Trillium area was built in nineteen ninety-four and the asphalt is beginning to lose the bond with the aggregate. This was evident in the cores. You could see that between the top layer of pavement and the lower layers of pavement, it was starting to de-bond. And that's an initial sign of a structural failure of the pavement. Windridge Trail was built in around ninety-five and the base area is failing again, evident in the cores that we took. So for all of these streets, we're proposing full-depth reclamation. You can see a reclaiming machine that's on the right of the screen. What it does is it grinds up the existing bituminous pavement into the aggregate pavement below. What that does is it produces a aggregate material. It's very much like a gravel road that you experience. On the backside of the truck, you can see that, that aggregate that is produced by this machine. What that becomes is material that we can compact and becomes the base pavement for the new pavement area. We would then be paving with new pavement on top. So the street improvements, the widths are proposed to stay the same. Grades would closely match what is already in place. The way we would try to improve any low areas that are holding water. Minor adjustments just for drainage improvements, things like that. Spot curb repair in the Trillium area. The other areas do not have curb. And then we'd look at adding a one-foot aggregate shoulder on Windridge. And then we would remove and replace the cul-de-sac island in Pine Circle.
Well, we talked about that.
Yes.
So we weren't, I thought we, we didn't want to remove it.
They're replacing it, they're taking up.
Remove and replace. So we would be re-establishing it the way it is.
Okay.
But we would add a curb.
Curb and gutter.
A nose on that to help prevent plow damage.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
They're not permanently removed.
Utility improvements includes the installation of what we call I N I barriers, inflow and infiltration on the sanitary sewer manholes in Pine Circle. I N I barriers had already been placed in the Trillium area. And we'd also replace leaking valves, leaky valve at the Trillium Way to Trillium Lane intersection. My apologies, I missed a point on that last slide. Back, back. We also talked with Public Works and are looking to add three additional gate valves in the Trillium area. This would help better isolate the water main for any sort of breaks or repairs that could happen down the future. That is a new thing since we last discussed with council is looking to add three more gate valves. So the proposed, proposed project costs are up on the screen. It's approximately one million four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in total project cost, one point four million in street and surface improvements, thirty-two thousand for sanitary improvements. And then the water main improvements are estimated to be, originally estimated to be about seventeen thousand dollar mark with the additional gate valves. It's slightly higher than that and I'll go through that cost in a minute here. The City of Minutrista Assessment Policy is to portion the cost to benefiting property owners. Historically, that has been approximately fifty percent of the project cost. In two thousand and twenty-two, special benefit analysis was completed and that, at the city council direction, assessments are proposed to be capped at ten thousand dollars per unit. Proposed project costs are associated with the surface and stormwater improvements. The sanitary and water main improvements are not assessed. We'd be, and those would be paid one hundred percent by the city. Just to be clear, the surface and storm improvements are per project area. So residents in Windridge would pay for the Windridge improvements, Pine Circle, Pine Circle, et cetera. Hardship referrals are available for senior citizens, disabled persons, members of the National Guard, and military reserves. Payment period is typically on twenty years and any assessment questions can be directed to Brian Grimm, the city finance director. So the proposed assessments for these project areas, Windridge Trail is proposed to be ten thousand dollars per unit. Pine Circle is proposed to be eighty-seven hundred per unit. This includes replacing the cul-de-sac island, again, replacing with curb. And the Trillium area is estimated ninety-seven hundred dollars per unit. So if we're looking at the funding for this project, you can see we've got the city responsibility in the first column, specially assessed, which would include all of the surface and storm improvements as shown there. And then the totals to the estimated project cost. Just again, to reiterate, the sanitary and water improvements are not assessed. The addition of the three gate valves would increase the water main cost from that seventeen thousand to approximately twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. So looking at the schedule, tonight is November eighteenth. Previously, the project was presented to the city on August nineteenth and to residents who chose to attend that meeting. Council accepted the feasibility report and called for this hearing tonight on October twenty-first. Here we are at the hearing. We are proposing that if the council moves forward, we would look to open bids February fifth and the council would order the assessment hearing in February with the hearing being held in March. Construction is estimated between June and September of two thousand and twenty-five. Please note that we do not anticipate that this project would take that full duration to be completed. We anticipate that the duration of construction would be reduced to a four to six week period, but it may occur anytime between June and September. I just would like to note that I did receive a call from a resident who was unable to attend tonight, so I wanted to share. This was from Terry Nelson at twenty-one, or sixty-one twenty Pine Circle. She indicated that they're fine with removing the island in the cul-de-sac and paving it, felt that that may be easier for them to work around, but didn't have a, seem to have a strong opinion either way when it comes to the cul-de-sac. So I'm happy to stand for any council questions, otherwise I will.
When you said they, do you mean that family or everyone on the cul-de-sac?
This resident at this property.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Otherwise, we'll, I'll open up. Okay, thank you. And you'll be available for answering questions. So I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. If you are here to, if you have questions or comments regarding this project, you may do so. I'm going to start on this side. If you would like to, you have to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You have questions or comments, feel free. We don't bite too hard.
Good evening. My name is Darren Hardey. I'm thirty-six, sixty-one ninety Pine Circle. My question is, a couple of years ago, when they did County Road forty-four, they parked heavy machinery on that road that really kind of tore it up at all. Has any of that been considered or does the county have to repair any of that or is that completely on us?
I think it's completely on the city. I know it was in pretty bad shape before. It's probably a little, maybe a little more worse for wear and tear because of that, but I think that the project is on us. As you know, we're paying actually more than fifty percent of the project, so.
Okay. And then I also support leaving the circle in there too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Matt?
Hi there. My name is Brand Palaza. Sixty-one thirty-five Pine Circle. I had the pleasure of presenting this group back on August nineteenth. I was very pleased with the results I got from this group. Very positive comment from you, Madam Mayor. Very positive comments from you also regarding the, the, the safety and the need to have that circle. I came here because I was under the impression that it might end up being paved over. Very, very pleased to see that it's not. And I just thank you all for doing a fantastic job.
We heard you. We'd like the kids playing on it.
Like the snow in the wintertime.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. Nice to hear. Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Steve Allick and I live on forty-three forty Trillium, Trillium Lane West. And with the road construction, what we've seen a pattern of is a lot of contractors with Bobcats, hot weather, and the roads get ripped up. Moving forward, we can't deal with what's happened in the past, but now we're going to get a new road. When I have heavy equipment in my yard, I put plywood down on, on the road. Is there any, do the city can go after contractors if they're, if they're causing, because they don't care. They come in and they rip it up and they leave and they get paid by the homeowner.
Sure.
My concern is, we're going to get this new road and it's going to get ripped up, you know?
Right. No, I totally understand. So generally, what we do is if it's like a new home construction. It's like.
It's landscaping projects.
Landscaping projects, yeah. What we could do is, I'm going to refer to Gary, when they've applied for a permit. Now, sometimes they don't apply for a permit, so we don't know that. If they apply for a permit and it does include heavy equipment, we could ask that they do something. But Gary, what, what's been our?
Well, it's landscaping projects, stuff like that. And we come across that, we do contact the police department and they do come out and have the company remove the, remove the stuff from the road. And then if there is damage, they will take pictures and they do write a report for us, so.
Yep. The last one that was on there had plywood down on the road and I was happy to see it, but it's not the normal thing you see. And now you're, we're spending a lot of money.
Exactly.
We just want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't get ripped up.
Us too.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, I know some of you are here for another project, so, okay.
Roger Schmidt, forty-three fifty Trillium Lane West. On the twenty-year payment schedule, so if you pay it upfront, it's ninety-seven hundred and over a period of twenty years, what's the total amount that's paid? How much interest, et cetera?
Well, it'll depend what the market, and right now, the interest would probably be around five, five and a half percent over twenty years. I'm just trying to think some of the corresponding recent projects. I mean, you'd be probably adding another five, six thousand in interest, you know, and paying, you know, if you pay it over the twenty years, it's fifteen versus ninety-seven hundred or give or take, or at least in that ballpark.
Okay. And they would be on your taxes or?
Yeah, if you pay it over the twenty years, it just gets added as a piece to your property tax along with the city, school, county.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else going once? Mr. Klein, did you want to speak? Okay, all right. I'm giving him a hard time. He used to sit here. So he, good guy. All right, if nobody else wishes to speak regarding the road project, going once, going twice, I'm going to close the public hearing now for that and take it back to council and staff. You want a resolution authorizing plans and specifications? Council, any other questions?
We have to decide about the vacant lot.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, Mayor and Council, I'm page three oh five of the packet. We did have a resident reach out with a question. This particular resident owns two properties on Trillium Lane East. One property contains the home and the other one is vacant. The vacant property is a corner lot on Trillium and County Road forty-four. And in the access, one of the access points to this home actually goes through the vacant property onto County Road forty-four. The property owner asked the question if the vacant property should be exempt from the assessment because it hasn't access to County Road forty-four. In the past instances, when there's a vacant property adjacent to a road that's being improved, it has been included in the project. Staff is looking for council direction in this matter. It's currently in the preliminary assessment. We certainly, we don't need to have a decision tonight. If there's more information we can bring to the council, we can do so. But if there's some preliminary thoughts that the council may have for staff, we would certainly appreciate the feedback.
You know, I think my recollection is in the past, if it's a corner lot, which this one would be, it depends on where the access is. And if it's on County Road forty-four, we haven't, have not assessed it. So in that, in this case, then you would only assess for one parcel. That's, that's what we did on Highland and Halsted, the one, the corner lots.
If I, if I may, I think, I think the, some more information about this lot is that it, it could be, there could be a house built on it. It could be subdivided.
Right.
I don't know if that's taken, been taken into account in the past for these things. But generally, if it's a, if it's a lot that you can expand onto if you want, if it would be sold, then, then we would assess.
That's, that's been our best practice.
Could a driveway be made onto Trillium?
Yeah, where would the driveway be if it was? Because I'm assuming they wouldn't get the right to put it on forty-four.
If they wanted to, they'd have to work with the county, but I would say probably not. So they'd have to go onto Trillium.
I think it'd be hard, well, I'm just saying one lot, but.
You went up to a lot on the map, please, Ally.
The driveway goes out to forty-four.
Right.
It doesn't look like there's a driveway on Trillium.
I think the, I think the drive, if I recall correctly, the driveway loops back onto Trillium. Another driveway? Yep, there's one there, but there's also to the home itself, I believe.
Maybe we can verify that and since we don't have to make that determination tonight.
Certainly.
If we could verify that and then get some more information.
Yep.
And find out if it truly is buildable. I'm not sure if it is. I, we'd have to figure that out.
If, if I may, one, one option would be to, if they, you know, only wanted to be assessed for one, they could combine their lot, I believe. They could potentially do that too, but that, no, but there'd be a cost of that, but.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll bring that back and then, any other? Right. So with that, is there a motion then to approve plans and specifications?
So moved.
Is that?
Madam Mayor, if I may, it's to order, it's to order the improvement.
Right.
We don't have plans and specifications prepared at this point.
No, I know that.
Ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparation.
Right.
Authorize it.
Yes, authorizing, exactly. I'm sorry. So motion is made to that effect by Ms. Rafkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any other questions, comments? We'll bring that lot issue back. And with that, motion, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, motions made, all those opposed, for O is the vote. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to our next, to our business item, which, so this business item, the applicant has requested that this be postponed or moved to a future council meeting. And what I would like to do tonight is allow, I know that there's people here tonight that would like to speak regarding this item. So the council will not take any action on this tonight, but we will be taking testimony or comments from the public. I would like to ask, and then we'll move this to our December second meeting, so that's in two weeks, I believe, two weeks from now. That's a Monday, December second. And well, the council will take it up at that time and discuss it at that time and then make a determination. But we certainly are willing to listen to what you folks have to say here tonight. I'd like to ask that you kind of keep your comments brief and you will have another opportunity on December second as well. So we're going to start with this side. If you would like to come forward, you're going to have to state your name and address for the record and you can address the council. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Jim Samuelson and I live at eleven oh five Sunnyfield Road North and I also own the property next to mine, ten twenty-five Sunnyfield Road. We have lived there since May of two thousand and one and during that time, we've never complained or were concerned about the Bokoviac operation because it was not intrusive and it was not an ISO. At the October Planning Commission meeting, I talked about my concern regarding the ISO and now see from, and I now see from my yard. Even though the Bokoviacs operated their business from the same property, I only saw a nice wooded lot. Today, I see a line of more than a dozen large boats wrapped in bright white plastic. And it really scares me that they claim they can double the number of the site from fifty to one hundred. Since then, I've done some checking and I've become even far more concerned about what is being done there and the magnitude of the increased commercial usage. From the filing, they make several claims which imply they are not really expanding the commercial use of the property, much of which in fact is order of magnitudes larger and more active than anything the Bokoviac operated. Bokoviacs use the property to park a few trucks and store supporting equipment to run their business. Tonka Auto and Marine clear cut a large area to store many boats and trucks. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was confirmed that they currently have about fifty boats and trucks onsite and could add another fifty if allowed. The Bokoviacs used a repair shop to maintain their own equipment used in the business. That is a big difference from this operation, which advertises the Lake Minnetonka area to be the one-stop-shop repair facility for all your auto and marine needs. The Bokoviacs never used the place to sell other people's equipment. But as of yesterday, when I looked on the Tonka Auto Marine Facebook page, it states they offer auto and marine service and sales. Well, our neighborhood now have to deal with used boat and auto dealership. The operation is far too out of, far out of bounds of what should be even considered in the neighborhood and the interim use permit can't fix that. At best, it'll be like putting lipstick on a pig. This area is not zoned for industrial or commercial. It's zoned agriculture with a vision towards residential. Sure, we have a few people operate small businesses out of their homes, such as boarding horses and trimming trees. But this business operation is non-agricultural, nor is it a person operating it out of their home. They do not live in the property. They do not even live in Minutrista. I don't like what was done. I don't like how this was done. I don't trust these owners to follow any guidelines to try to fix the damage to our neighborhood. I sent a letter just a few hours ago to, to the city, which has additional concerns such as the impact on the roads where their spring, where our spring restrictions overlap with their spring splash, where many of their owners will want their boats transported to the lake. The ecological impact of having fifty to one hundred booked, boats and trucks for months, some of which will be leaking oil, fuel, and other harmful chemicals into the marsh and the creek nearby. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Anybody else on this side? Just come forward and state your name and address.
Mike Entinger, thirteen oh five Blair Road. My wife and I built a house on Blair Road forty-one years ago, so I know a lot about the Bokoviacs, their business, the like. I also know that we've got wetlands involved here where the people that have moved on to the property are intruding on that. The Minnehaha Watershed District was involved with designing in my pond. I'm on the start of another waterway that leads that direction. There's also another filtration site right on Game Farm Road and the creek that comes directly out of the swamp from behind them. The filtering that water. directly out of the swamp from behind them, to filter in that water to go into that lake. Well, now we've taken off the cover, we've added aggregate, moved dirt around. There's so many things that should not be disturbed there, i.e. the dump that ceased to exist in, I think, 1970. They used to haul things there. The Bokoviacs are good neighbors. They brought their trucks out in the morning, empty, and they came home at night, empty, because they didn't have, want to bring stuff back to their home, or to their business, and take it back in again. So as far as road impact and that, I don't think they're there. I, it's only my second time here. Once was to talk about the gravel roads, and I want to, I think I talked to you directly on Blair Road maybe a few months ago. They're doing an outstanding job on crowning, and the ditch work and that, it's, it's perfect. And then I don't get this opportunity, so I just wanted to say something to the police chief that he gets. First chance I get. They took care of the problem with the high schoolers before somebody got hurt, really bad. I don't know how they did it, but I just want to let everyone know.
They do an excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah. I could, I won't go any further as to why that business, which we now learned, they told us that through the Planning Commission, is just marine auto. If you go on your website, it says auto and marine with the new Sunnyfield address. Doesn't fit into residential agricultural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side?
I'm Pete Wiley, 1250 Game Farm Circle. Would it be possible to show the before and after photos that were in the packet? I don't know if we have access to those.
Sure, we do.
We can bring those up on the screen. But I wanted, I wanted you to hear from me. I read all the letters. You know, they're very well done. They bring up a lot of good points. They're all professionally written. But I wanted you to hear from me that I'm very mad about the situation. I just think it's done a lot of damage to our, to our neighborhood. My wife and I bought our property 15 years ago. It was a big investment for us. The main reason we bought the property was, it's just a beautiful property. Where we live is, you know, such beautiful views. We've got about 1,200 feet of shared property line with this, with the Sunnyfield Road situation, and now we see boats all over the place. It's just, that, that's our biggest impact that impacts us directly. But we also see it, you know, for the people that live on Sunnyfield Road. I mean, it's a, just drive by it, it's a total eyesore. I can't, you know, it's, if you look at the before and after, when you saw what was going on with the Bokoviac, very, very minimal impact. And you look at it now, I think the aerial photo showed, I don't know, maybe there's like 40 boats in that photo. There's a lot more now. It's a, it's a huge impact, and there's just no, I mean, yeah, so that's the, that's the before, when the Bokoviacs were there, and, you know, if you look at, if you, if you go to the next slide, it's just, this can't, I can't say it any better in this picture, and just think about, there's a lot more boats on the property now. And I, you know, I look at this logo here, and it's, it's a little bit humorous, but not really. I mean, should we put like a boat storage facility on the logo? Is that what we're going to become? So there, there's a lot of great reasons in, in the letters, but I just wanted to be here to, you know, let you know that I think this is a really big deal, and I think a lot of people are upset about this, and, so if, if any of you have any questions, I want to hear more from people that are being impacted directly. You know, I wrote a letter, so please, please contact us.
And we, we have that in our packet, and we have read those, and we have more than just yours, too. So just so you know.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Anybody else on this side? I'll move to this side. Is there anybody on this side that wishes to speak? Okay. So like I said, we're not going to take action. Our past practice has always been to, if the applicant wants to extend the application a little bit, we do that. But I wanted to give everybody, because this was last minute kind of thing, an opportunity that came tonight, because I appreciate you coming out, an opportunity to speak. We will bring this back on December 7th. The council will discuss it at that, December 2nd. The council will discuss it at that time, and then we'll be making a determination, and we will take everything into consideration. With that, do we need a motion to extend this to December 2nd?
Madam Mayor, I would recommend you do a motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be December 2nd.
All right. Then, do I have a motion to postpone the determination until December 2nd?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rafkin. Any further questions by the council? All right. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. We will see you on the 2nd. Thank you very much. With that, it concludes our business items, and so we will move on to administrative items. You're all welcome to stay if you'd like, and if not, but we have a lot of fun things going on. So, yeah. Thank you. All right. Staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only I'll mention is, we have our upcoming tree lighting event coming up on December 5th. It starts at 5, goes till about 7:15, and there will be fireworks. Wanted to get that in.
Hopefully, real fireworks.
Yeah.
And the tree will light, and everything.
Yeah. So we're looking forward to the event. Hopefully, it's a good turnout. We have good weather. It looks like it's going to be fairly mild. It won't be negative 10, but it might be about, I don't know, I don't know what they're saying, 30s, 20s, 30s. It's pretty good for, for December.
As long as it's not windy, and we can have our fires, and, and there'll be wine and beer for purchase, and food, too. Food, I think there'll be food from McIntunes, so lots of fun things.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay.
I do need a liaison, Madam Mayor, please, for our Planning Commission, November 25th.
25th. Anybody, what do you have on the agenda?
The subdivision that expired on County Road 44 and a lakeside setback variance.
Okay.
I can go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got one. There you go. All right. So let's see. Council reports, I'll start. So back in a few, maybe a month or so ago, the League of Minnesota Cities does this essay contest with 4th, 5th, and 6th graders, and we contacted, Jasper contacted the West Tonka School and said, would you like to participate? But we changed it up just slightly. I believe they're going to be submitting their essays to the Minnesota League as well. But what they did at the grade school is, they went through the essays, and they picked the top three. So we have three winners, if you will, the top three. I have, I just got the notice this afternoon. We're going to invite the children and their family, the three award winners or winners here, and they're going to read their essays, and it's, if they were mayor, what would they do? And it's so cute. It's wonderful. It's great. I'm going to also ask if they would like to come a little early, so I can give them a tour of City Hall. Is that okay? And maybe even ask if one of them would like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So just something fun for them to do. It's 4th, 5th, and 6th graders, and so we'll do that on this, on December 2nd, I believe. I have to contact the parents and see their availability. I'm hoping that they'll be available. I'll let you know on that. I also attended Northwest League, and we had, actually, what's his name, from Kennedy and Graven, and he's kind of, okay, and kind of the guru on a lot of things, but one of the things that they were talking about is some legislation that passed pertaining to policing, and I talked to the chief about it. He's aware of what this is, and it's another tool in their toolkit for them to be able to use. I think it's like, you, maybe you can explain it better, because I know what it is, but I don't know the acronym and stuff.
Madam Mayor and Council, it is emergency restraining orders for, in cases where there may be people that we feel are a danger to themselves or others, and it's, it's a mechanism that can help remove weapons or guns specifically from the homes.
Right.
Fortunately, we have not had to use that yet, but it's just another tool that we can use.
Right.
If that need arises.
So they talked about that, and then they also talked a little bit, I was very familiar about this, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name, but he knew the case quite well, with, what did they call them? Homes for people that are recovering from alcohol and drug abuse. And so we talked about that, and the restrictions that come along with that, and, and so on. So there just was some very good discussion about that, because, and I was able to weigh in a little bit on that one, because as you know, or, well, I'm not sure who was all here on the council at the time, but we had a, have a very robust discussion in many meetings regarding the one that's in our community.
So are there restrictions on those now, or?
We don't have restrictions, basically. We're very restricted in what we can do, because they fall under the Fair Housing Act. They are considered, so people with, that are recovering or with addictions, they, they actually are a protected class. Just, yeah, you can't discriminate against them, so.
Is that on West Edge?
No, it's out there on Scott.
Or Susan?
Susan, Susan Lane, Scott, Susan Lane, yeah, out there. So we had a lot of fun, so that was interesting. And then, so, and then, of course, Kathleen and I attended the early morning meeting of Moun, the fire partnership meeting, and we're looking at bringing back a resolution, I believe, December 2nd?
Possibly. We, we may, it might be the beginning of the year. We're looking to get some feedback from the other cities before we adopt.
Yeah.
Okay.
The version.
So what, what the chiefs were asking is simply a resolution from the city councils saying that, yes, they're in favor of moving forward, exploring the concept of J, of a joint powers agreement. And we're not, we're not binding ourselves, we're not, we're not binding ourselves to agreeing to a JPA. We're simply saying, we do want to move forward and have more discussions regarding JP, or joint powers agreement. And so they want a resolution, just because they don't want to spin their wheels and so on. So we'll be, and then their next meeting is December 10th. It's at 3:30. So that's a nicer meeting time. And, and then also, we'll be having a special recognition of Councilmember McGregor at our December 2nd meeting, and so invite friends or family, or whoever you think might like to come and recognize Ms. McGregor for her time here, four years as a council member. She was a great, I think she did a great job, and she participated and really added some value to, to the council and to the communities. So we want to thank her for that. She will be here. And, and anything else that you can think of? I think that's it for now. Oh, and then on Wednesday, I should say, Ally and I, she won't be here, but Ally and I are meeting with a midco team here. They just kind of want to come, and I think it's just kind of introduction to their team kind of thing, and it's a publicity thing, but we want to support them as they have supported us, and we're excited about having them in our community, and so they're going to come here, maybe we'll give them a tour of City Hall. I'm not sure what they, what, what we're going to do, but they'll be here Wednesday morning, so I will be here with, and Ally will be here, too. That's all I can think of right now. That's it. Kathleen, anything?
I have the St. Bonnie Fire Commission on Thursday, at least. I'm assuming you're going, too? We haven't heard anything, so I'm guessing we're still having it, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I haven't received an agenda or anything yet, so it's in the calendar.
Eric might be canceling it, but if he's not, I will be at it.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report.